Okay, so first we have consideration of routine items. It's recommended that the agenda of the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Tyler, a second?
A second.
Second by Melissa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. It's recommended that the minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
I assume that we accept the October sixteenth agenda as presented.
So, motion by Matt, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. There are no statements from the public, so we will continue with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have Mr. Hunt and Mrs. Adams here again this evening to recognize our character traits winners for the month of October. So, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you. Good evening. If we could have all of the character trait winners to move over in this area for us. So kiddos, if you're one of our character trait winners, just move right over here next to Ms. Adams. Alright, so here's how we're gonna do it. We are going to talk a little bit about integrity, and then when we call your name, you'll come up and you're gonna get a back tag, or a bag tag that you hang on your backpack that announces you as a character winner. They're gonna walk right along the front of this table. You get to shake all of our board members and our superintendent's hand as you go around. And then, if you would, just kinda come back over here. We're gonna get a group picture afterward, okay? So you guys walk back over this way. Tonight, we're here to honor all of our character trait award winners for the month of October. In October, we celebrated integrity. Students who show the character trait of integrity are those that can be counted on to tell the truth, even when the truth is hard. They know how to be honest about their own successes and failures. They can give good feedback, and they are willing to share it. Students with integrity are self-aware and are willing to work on their weaknesses and build on their own strengths. They are able to make an informed and positive decision in supporting their own success. They can be counted upon to do the right thing, even when no one is looking. It's a really hard character trait to learn and to grow into, and so all of these students should be applauded for their efforts. For Rockport Elementary, we have Desmond Burris. If you're here, come on up. Faith Wilburn. Faith, just walk right along there and shake hands. Aiden Burden. Mason Atkins. Damian Smith. Knox Orgeus. Brynlee Horn. Effie Schroder. Brielle Gross. Presley Cronin. Alexia Hamilton. Ruby Schroder. Oneiver Holland. Grayson Dewis. Callie Mills. Grayson Davis. Camden Hutchinson. Chevy Cooper. Jace Ball. Cash Utzman. Finn Johnson. And Tyler McFlur. Thank you.
Our Loose Elementary recipients for integrity is Savannah Williams. I'm gonna walk with her real quick so she can shake.
She was gentle.
Jay Sherman. Berkeley Hall. Titan Gilmore. Trainlock. Raylan Kaiser. Caroline Harpenoff. Ally Oats. Axel Abscher. Haley Blake. Brody Belcher. Abigail Jones. Addison Jennings. Harper Davis. Luke Neighbors. And Hunter Bates. Congratulations.
So we're gonna have all the kiddos from right up here. We're getting a group photo, and then we'll take a little break in the board meeting to allow you to get some other photos if you'd like to take a picture with the board with your kiddo. And then, if you would like, you may go before the business part of the meeting gets started. So, thank you.
Parents, thank you for the great job you do, teaching your kids the importance of integrity. You know, we say all the time, yes, it's our job to teach reading and writing and arithmetic and science and those types of things, but it's also our responsibility to teach them how to be good humans, right? So integrity is a big part of that. So, thank you, and thank you for being here tonight to support your child. That says a lot about the job you do as parents, and I commend you for that. So, thank you.
Leader taking pictures. It'll be the Spencer County leader with all of that. Boys, girls, you may find your parents. Parents, if you'd like to get other pictures again with our board, and just take a moment to congratulate your kiddo. Thank you for coming out tonight to honor your kids here.
And then this should be right here. Absolutely. All of them. We can do that.
Just for a moment. Good work, Damien.
You're very welcome. Would you like to picture? Alright. Mr. Bummer? Ah, that's good.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
She's gonna give a speech here, isn't it?
Good job.
Awesome.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Bye, Luke.
Alright. At this time, I'm gonna ask our South Spencer Middle School and High School Athletic Director, Mr. Josh Bowles, to come forward. I think he's gonna give us an update on Rebel Athletics.
Tough act to follow. Everybody clear down? No, but I just wanted to come up every three or four months and kinda update everybody on what's going on in the athletic world. It's hard to believe that it's been three or four months already, but we've hit the ground running. Proud of everything we've accomplished so far, but we've still got plenty of work to do. Fall sports were a big success for us across the board. We had a lot of individual athletes accomplish a lot of great things. A couple I'm just gonna point out was Addison Kibbins with Girls Golf. She was all-conference and qualified for the regional for a second straight year. And Emma Dewis in cross-country qualified for the regional for a second straight year. So just a couple of our individual athletes that performed well and maybe don't always get the recognition they deserve, so wanted to make sure to note them. With girls soccer, we hosted the sectional again this year, and we had lots of great feedback from everybody that came in for the sectional. Lots of the opponents were very complimentary of our facility. I know we had one lady from Evansville Christian that came up to Mr. Bush and I and said, "We just love coming to South Spencer because of how awesome of an atmosphere you guys have and the facilities you have." So, really complimentary there with the soccer sectional. Our middle school programs did great in the fall. Both of our middle school football teams beat Heritage Hills, which anytime we can throw that out there, we're going to do. Middle school volleyball won the Heritage Hills eighth grade tournament. Again, we're gonna throw that out there. So lots of great stuff happening this fall. I had a visit from the Associate Commissioner of the IHSA, Mr. Ed Gillen. He came in one day in August. I gave him a tour of our facilities. Again, very complimentary. We continue to be one of the smallest schools in the state that offer all nineteen varsity sports, which is exceptional. There's not too many schools our size that offer all nineteen sports across the state. So, they recognize that. We're on the state's radar, which is important. We've also been able to get new uniforms for the cross-country, boys tennis, girls basketball, and middle school basketball teams. There was definitely a need there. Cross-country didn't even have their own uniform. They were wearing old track uniforms. So, we addressed some needs there that we were proud of. Just some other things I wanted to highlight that we're doing. We're trying to revamp our social media. A new athletic website is in the works. I know the one we have isn't the greatest, and so I've been working with Mr. Schiff on throwing around some things we can do there. Shout out to our athletic trainer, Sherri Oats. She's been coming in and doing the Take Ten program with all of our teams. It's a ten-minute CPR AED training with all of our student athletes and coaches, which is really important, not just for, obviously, our coaches to know, but our athletes, because like we tell them, what happens if you're out at soccer practice and your coach goes down? Has a cardiac event, right? What are you gonna do? So Sherri's been really helpful with that, coming in with all of our teams and giving them that training. We're excited about the new cutting facility that's going up. That's just about finished. If you haven't been in there, it looks great on the inside. I think we plan to have an open house and a ribbon-cutting ceremony here soon for that, so definitely check that out. In your board information, I attached something that we're trying to start called the Rebel Way. It's just kinda my philosophy for the athletic department. It's something that I've talked about with our coaches quite a bit, and also something that I've started to talk about with our new student-athlete leadership team that I started. Just trying to change kinda the culture and the climate of the athletic department. So, I won't go into much detail there, but just something we're working on. We've also been able to award three IHSA Sportsmanship Pins this fall. It's for student athletes that excel in sportsmanship or perform a sportsmanlike act in a game or in an event. We had two football players that were very sportsmanlike at Pike Central when we played football up there. I witnessed them go up to every single ref before the game, shake their hand, and say, "Thank you for being here." And, you know, that's the kinda stuff we gotta have. And so, and then Hadley Clark, a girls soccer player, also received one. There's a great picture of her online, helping a soccer player, girls soccer player from Princeton, who was an amputee, and was helping her tire shoe on the field. So, just great things that our kids are doing that we wanna make sure that we recognize. And finally, just looking ahead to the winter season, we are hosting the boys PSC Holiday Basketball Tournament both days, so that'll be a big week for us. And something that we're really proud of, for the first time in the history of South Spencer, we're gonna host the girls basketball sectional here at the last week of January. So, lots of exciting stuff happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. I wanna thank Mr. Bowles. This is his first year as our athletic director. He's jumped right in. He's gone to work. He's got some great ideas for Rebel Athletics moving forward. Just super proud, super happy to have him leading our athletic department. He's done a great job, and I think he's only gonna get better from here. So, thank you, Josh. That's all I have.
Alright. So we will move on to the consent items. So number one, approve the payroll claim dockets and the accounts payable claims as presented in the board packet. Number two, approve the treasurer's financial reports for September and October twenty twenty-three. Number three, accept the resignation of the following. Approve to post the positions and grant permission to hire. So we have Emily Kaufman, South Spencer High School Varsity Volleyball Coach, effective October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Madeline Boswell, South Spencer High School JV Volleyball Coach, effective October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Angela Hammers, Rockport Elementary Health Aid, effective October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Hope Worzinski, Loose Elementary Teacher Assistant, effective November third, twenty twenty-three. Bettina Martin, Loose Elementary Ten Month Custodian, effective November fourth, twenty twenty-three. And that's it. Alright, so can I get a motion to approve these consent items?
I'll motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And then we have consideration of administrative recommendations. So before we get started, I would like to make a motion to table items number one, two, and three. So can I get a motion to table these items? Or I would make a motion. I just need a second, sorry.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. So then we will move to item number four. Mr. Schneider.
Thank you. And before we get to four, for the public that may be sitting after going, "Oh, my God, what's up?" There were some technical mistakes with our public meeting on the tentative agreement. That requires board members to be in attendance, and we did not meet that criteria. And we also did not get our tentative agreement posted to our website seventy-two hours before that meeting. So, instead of just trying to blow up through that, we're taking a step back. We're gonna make sure we do things the right way. So, we have posted this afternoon that there will be a public meeting on the tentative agreement that the board members will be attending this Thursday, six o'clock in this meeting. And then we will be scheduling a special board meeting next Tuesday, six o'clock in this room, to address items one, two, and three. So, I don't want people to think, "Oh, my God, what's going on?" It was a clerical error. Herb has put in some new requirements with bargaining, and ultimately, that was my mistake. I didn't make sure all the boxes were checked. So I did talk with Herb this afternoon, and this is their path they're recommending they can take. So, that is why we had to do that.
Can we, on that topic, can we discuss those dates and times? I've got a conflict with the first date that you mentioned on that. We don't have to do it tonight, but in regards to before announcing and posting when meetings are, I think as a board, especially with George not being here tonight, we need to discuss that to make sure that we can make those meetings.
Okay, so we will go with item number four.
Item number four, thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a recommendation from South Spencer High School Athletic Director, Mr. Josh Bowles, to hire Mr. Billy Wagner to the position of Head Varsity Softball Coach for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Mr. Wagner has spent over twenty years coaching fast pitch softball, including the last ten years as a JV coach at Evansville Memorial High School. His knowledge of the game, positive relationships built between himself, his players, and parents, and understanding of how to build a program make him an outstanding candidate. It's my pleasure this evening to recommend the board to hire Mr. Billy Wagner as the Head Varsity Softball Coach for South Spencer High School as presented.
And then can we get his name listed and make sure it's listed?
Yes.
Alright, can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And then number five?
Congratulations, Mr. Wagner. Welcome to being a rebel. JT Kinkle of JT Kinkle and Sons Architects has provided a flagpole from Grandview Aluminum at a cost of one thousand five hundred and five dollars and wishes to donate said flagpole to South Spencer High School. Danko Construction has also agreed to donate the materials and time to erect the flagpole so it can be enjoyed and used by the football teams as well as the soccer teams beginning next year. I would like to thank JT Kinkle and Sons Architects for the donation, and Danko Construction for the donation of time and materials to set the flagpole. This evening, I'd like to recommend the board accept these donations as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll motion.
Motion by Tyler, a second?
A second to Tyler's motion.
Second by, I'm sorry. Second by Matt, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And then number six?
In your board packet, you will find a request from South Spencer High School Art Teacher, Mr. Sean Hudson, to take the high school art choir and band students to Chicago, Illinois. This will be a great experience to learn about art history, as well as observe vocal and instrumental musical performances. I recommend the board approve his request as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And then number seven?
Thank you. In your board packet, you will find a proposed agreement with Melissa Davis to process payroll and provide training to our treasurer and deputy treasurer. Mrs. Davis is very knowledgeable, experienced, and knows our policies, procedures, and staff, and will provide a smooth transition for a new treasurer and ensure all aspects of the treasurer position is covered. I recommend the board approve the agreement as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Motion by Tyler, a second?
A second.
Second by Melissa, any discussion?
What's the time length on that agreement, Mr. Schneider?
We've kinda discussed to the point where Monica and Mallory feel comfortable in their new roles. I mean, certainly it's gonna go through the end of the year, because we're gonna need Melissa's assistance with year-end, closing the books, opening the new books. So, I think we're probably looking at least through January. And then I told the ladies, we'll have that conversation. As to how much training they need.
I just wanna make sure we're not opening up a new position.
No, no, no. And I wanna thank Mrs. Davis for offering this, because this training coming from someone else, I don't think would be nearly as effective with her knowledge of the job and our school corporation is. That's gonna be an incredible asset to our school corporation, so.
Alright. So let's vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that motion carries four oh. And then number eight?
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a request from Mr. Jeff Daiming to take a group of football players to Bethel University to watch Jalen Taylor play his last home college game, and that was this past Saturday. I'd like to recommend the board approve the request as presented.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Motion by Tyler, a second?
I'll second Tyler's motion for the contract.
Second by Matt, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And then we have consideration of personnel recommendations.
As always, of the last board, is there any name on this list you would like to take by itself, or is the whole list agreeable?
You said there was a name on your list.
Item V, the second individual, has pulled her name from the position. She has decided to stay in her current position, so that transfers, okay?
Okay.
Alright. I will read the entire list then. Heather McGee, Special Education Teaching Assistant at South Spencer Middle School, pending a clear background check. Susan Greenwell, transfer to the Loose Title I Teaching Assistant Position from the Loose Health Aid Position, effective when we can fill the Health Aid Position. Brian Keister, Head Baseball Coach, effective twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Sean Keister, Assistant Baseball Coach, effective the twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Jeremy Keister, Assistant Baseball Coach, that will be a seventy-five percent stipend. That is also effective this school year. Bryce Studaville, Assistant Baseball Coach, that will be at twenty-five percent of the ECA contract. That is effective for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Charleston Roberts, volleyball base, I'm sorry, volunteer baseball coach, effective the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Brighton McCrary, Middle School Boys Basketball Helper, effective the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And Ryan Lee, Middle School Girls Basketball Helper, effective the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve these?
I'll motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And then there were written reports to the board that included the technology report, the maintenance report, the transportation report, and the new volunteers report. Are there any statements or concerns of the board?
I do, I have three things. One is the Loose Fall Festival was extremely successful. There were so many people there, so many kids, so many parents there, helping, a lot of entertainment. It was just really, really, really good night. Secondly, congratulations to the band. Our high school band made it to state. Very, very, very proud of them after what they have dealt with the past two years. They are very, they should be proud of themselves. Thirdly, I just would like to ask everybody to keep Mr. Jay Wilson's family and their thoughts and prayers. He passed away here recently, so.
And the band did, they finished eighth in the state. So fabulous job by Mr. Keith, the Marching Rebels, the parents, all the people that assist that program. That's a great accomplishment, and they're on the right trajectory, and we expect even bigger, better things next year. We will, we will invite the band. I'd love Mr. Keith coming. But if you're familiar, marching band's a long, long season, and I think they're about worn out. They did say they greatly appreciate all the support from the school, from the community, and it just felt like they needed a little break, so. But, thank you for saying that.
I have a concern for the board. So, there's something that needs to be on our radar, and I've talked about it. It sounds like a broken record, but we need to be made aware of it. I was informed in the last two weeks that our corporation just north of us is getting ready to get hit with a loss of some tax revenue between two and a half and four and a half million dollars that will hit this spring, and will hit their bank account for the next school year. and will hit their bank account for the next school year. And it's gonna be something that we're gonna have to watch because that 2028 drop-dead date for AEP, our great friends and neighbors out here, that's gonna happen. Real good chance that that's gonna happen. And if it does, that's about 40% of our tax base. So, if you think about $4 out of every 10 that we spend not being in our account, that is gonna be something that we have to watch. And we can't sit with our heads in the sand and say, "Let's wait until we get closer to be there." We have to be good stewards of our money. So, I would say this spring will be a good idea of how they handle and what they do with their situation as to see what we're gonna do. Because that same amount, pretty close to what our number's gonna be in 2028 as well. And they've got a much larger corporation than we do. So, it won't help. The percentage won't be as high for them, but the dollars will be the exact dollar for dollar. So, something completely different than what we're facing with AEP, you know, leaving, but they're facing with some tax changes that are gonna affect their bank accounts. So, that's my concern.
All right, anything else from the board?
I would like to clarify, sorry. I know I asked that everybody keep Mr. Jay Wilson's family and their thoughts and prayers. I just wanted to clarify, he used to be a teacher and a principal here at the middle school. So, if anybody was wondering who that was, that's who it is.
Okay, so our next regular meeting of the board will be Monday, December 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here in the multipurpose room at the high school. And time is 6:33. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Like you were.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.